obtained from citizens who telephoned the Gillespie County Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunications of the Gillespie County Communication Centers have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has displayed exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, making them headset heroes. Now therefore be it resolved that I Charlie Keeney, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, the State of Texas, to hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 16th, 2022 as National Public Safety Telecommunication Communicators Week in Fredericksburg, Texas, and as the citizens honor the men and the women whose diligence and professionalism help keep our city and our citizens safe. In witness thereof, I here set my hand an official seal of the City of Fredericksburg this fourth day of April 2022. I know there's someone here to receive that. On a side note, I had the opportunity during the nice 21, absolutely worth the ladies in Bend, 24/7, just phenomenal, and they did excellent, excellent job getting it through a really hard trying event. So I really appreciate their work, their work, and I want the citizens to know 24/7, you know, they work. Five or six ladies up there? Yeah, okay, good deal, thank you.
Mayor, Council, it gives me pleasure this evening to recognize four different individuals working for the city. You'll bear with me, I'll read, we'll read you some information about these employees. And I want to start with recognizing our City Secretary Kelly, Shelley, Shelley Goodwin is received a letter on March 22nd from the President of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and I'll just read it to the council and for the public. Most of you, of course, know Shelley, and knows the great job that she's been doing for the city for a number of years. But in this letter, it indicates that Shelley Goodwin of City of Fredericksburg has earned the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, otherwise known as CMC, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. IIMC grants this designation only to those municipal clerks who complete demanding educational requirements and who have earned a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community, and state. In light of the speed and drastic nature of change these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all in local government to keep pace with growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. Your city can take pride immense pride in Shelley's educational accomplishments and achievement of this milestone. On behalf of the IIMC Board of Directors, I am honored to endorse the conferring of CMC to Shelley Goodwin of City of Fredericksburg. We share your pride in this achievement, and we applaud your support in the role Shelley plays in your city. Sincerely, Sherri Pierce, IIMC President. So we want to recognize Shelley. I know it's a lot of hard work. Even though I did mess up her first name, but yeah, we won't, we won't talk about that. Okay, so moving on, the second recognition this evening actually comes from a letter to the editor that appeared in last week's newspaper, and I know most of you read the paper, but I wanted to just basically call your attention to this really nice letter involving our police department. And it's only three paragraphs, I'll just, I'll read it real quickly. It says, "That TV advertisement, 'I'm falling and can't get up,' has become trite with repetition over the years, but last week it became a reality to my dear 90-year-old friend. She fell and laid on her floor for many hours with a compound fracture, fracture of her right ankle. Friends were unable to get her to come to the door, and the house was locked up tighter than a drum. Our Fredericksburg Police Department was able to rescue her from what in a few more hours would have been critical. This is just a small part of the rescue service these fine men do for our community, not just stopping those citizens going over 40 miles an hour on Friendship Lane." Tom, can you relate to that one, Tom? And then it concludes by saying, "I wish to publicly thank these officers for their dedication to duty, and at this time acknowledge Officer Chase Moore, who made the welfare check and rescued my friend, Marty Taylor, Fredericksburg." Yeah. And then a couple of accolades that involve our employees and teamwork. First off, we got a note from Shelley. We have at least once or twice a year, we have a major shredding event at City Hall where we shred all boxes and boxes of documents. I think, oh, was it 33 boxes this time, or what? Not more, yeah. But anyway, a major ordeal, and so this is a note that in this case it involved the teamwork, including Michael Rhodes and Adrian Flores from the Street Department, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And she said also want to thank Leslie Embry and Rebecca Goff for helping with the process and removing items. It takes a team to make a shredding happen efficiently, and that was displayed today. I'm sorry, the results from today shredding, 115 boxes, including a total of 2,400 pounds. So again, cooperation between Street Department and the City Secretary's Office. And the other example teamwork occurred last week, Mayor Council, where all in one week, we converted to the Granicus STR permitting system. At the same time, we were in the process of updating our new STR ordinance. And so this required the staff of the Finance Department and Development Services to work a lot of hours, particularly with Granicus, taking the data from Avenue Inside and converting them over to Granicus, setting up all the new permitting system and so forth in Granicus. So I sent them an email on Friday thanking them for their extra work to get everything in place, but I did want to acknowledge them also this evening, those two departments. And last but not least, a couple of weeks ago, the council got word that through the efforts of Laura and the Laura Hollibek in the Finance Department, we once again received the recognition from the Government Finance Officers Association for our distinguished budget award to recognize our budget document, the thoroughness of the document, the facts that it conveys to the public, what we want to try to accomplish during the coming year. It's more than a bunch of numbers. It has a lot of good information that makes the city a lot more transparent. And so Laura and her staff, once again, were responsible for winning that award. So that award will be presented at a later date, but I did want to recognize them this evening. So maybe that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you very much. It's always good to get good news. Okay, we're going to move on to public comments on agenda items. We have two individuals who have signed up. Jason Lux, you want to speak to 11E, and Jeanette Hormuth, 14B. You'll have three minutes. You'll get a one-minute warning sound. It's coming. Okay. And when your time is up, you'll hear the same sound. So Jason, thank you, and you're ready to roll.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Kent, I don't want to try not to give too many spoilers on your staff report. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank council, city staff, and everybody in the room here tonight. It has really been an honor and a privilege to serve y'all for this last year. You know, and when I was interviewed, I think everybody knows this was kind of my dream job. And so it's funny, they asked me, what's going to motivate you, what's going to keep you moving forward? And I said, you know, just because I care, and I want to do a good job for my family, for my friends, neighbors, citizens. And ultimately leave this place better than when I found it. So I think, I think we did that. I think this last year, this ordinance, you know, we can't always agree on regulations and rules, but I think, I think we are in a better place. And that's a reason why I really love local government, because, you know, you can talk the federal and state levels, but at the local level, you truly do have a common purpose, a common goal for the benefit of Fredericksburg. And, and the only real difference is, is on what path we take to get there. And so again, we had different paths through this process, but we got there. And so I do commend council for their action. Like I said, it was the best year of my life, definitely the hardest, dealing with rumors, public pressure. That takes a lot of sacrifice, and I'm literally preaching to the choir here. You guys have been beat up every time we're at a meeting, whether you're doing good or not, it doesn't matter, you're at someone's mercy. So I think you understand that. And so, you know, I'm a passionate person. I worked very diligently this year. And sometimes when you're making tough choices, you have to make those sacrifices. And so, so I have done that today. I can tell you, I don't know what I'm going to do in the future. Thank you, Eric. But there are two things I will do. I said to myself, one is, I'm going to hold my head high. I think we did good work here. I'm going to continue to fight the perception and not let perception override facts. And I'm not going to allow others to kind of create a false narrative around me or my actions. So I will continue to do that. The second thing that I'm going to do is something that I've always done. And even though I'm no longer employed by the City of Fredericksburg, I will continue to work for the City of Fredericksburg. I will be involved. I will continue to pick up trash on my morning runs. I will continue to volunteer. I will continue to be involved in community work. So I know the comp plan's starting. I'm actually excited about that. I might get more input now as a citizen than I did as a staff member. So again, it was, it was a privilege and honor and my pleasure to serve you. You guys have a great staff. It's truly amazing. And I think because this is a place where your staff is made up of locals and people that care. So they show it every day. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. And I apologize if you would state your name, if you're a city resident. I'm sure everybody knows, but for the record, Jeanette.
Yes.
And you'll hear the same sound at one minute and at the end. Thank you.
Yes, Jeanette Hormuth, Fredericksburg. I just wanted to comment on the executive session. You're speaking about the requirements and everything you're looking at for the city manager. And I want to say that we want to see the process to be transparent and open. We'd like to see who are the people being considered and information from where we could check, you know, and vet. And, and also really anyone that Texas Municipal League might be recommending, we are against. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Okay, that's the only individuals that signed up for the public comment on items on the agenda. We do have a number for public comment at the end, so we'll get to you folks a little later. Thank you very much for those comments. We're going to move now to the item seven, consent agenda item. The following items may be acted upon in a single motion. No separate discussion or action or any of these items will be held unless pulled by, at the request of a member of the city council. I believe, Kent, you'd like to make a statement at this time?
Yes, sir. It's the, one of the items on the agenda, the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 22nd meeting, 21st meeting. And the city attorney has advised me to recuse for that item because included in the minutes was the council's discussion and approval of changes to the STR ordinance. And as the council is aware, a couple of days ago, I did apply for an STR permit for my house. And in order to avoid any conflict of interest, I am going to leave the room as the advisor of the city attorney.
Thank you, Kent. Okay, this is a long consent agenda item. It's going to take me a little while to read through it all. A, consider the approval of the city council meetings for March 21, 2022 regular meeting. B, consider the approval of request from the Kraut Run Event Coordinator to close West Travis Street from North Crockett to North Adams from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, October the 1st, 2022. C, consider the approval of request for the Oktoberfest Event Coordinator for the following. I, complete closure of Adams Street from Maine and Austin beginning on Wednesday, September 28th, 2022 at 7:00 AM through Monday, October the 3rd, 2022 at 3:00 PM. Double I, the complete closure of Austin Street between Crockett and Adams beginning Thursday, September 29th, 2022 at 7:00 AM until Monday, October the 3rd, 2022 at 12:00 PM. Triple I, the use of parking of Crockett Street, the use of parking on Crockett Street across from City Hall and next to Broadway Bank beginning Friday, September 30th, 2022 at 5:00 PM until Sunday, October 2, October 2, 2022 at 8:00 PM. I for, the use of the drive-in bay area behind City Hall and X1, corner of Crockett and Austin Street, beginning Friday, September 30th, 2022 at 5:00 PM until Sunday, October the 2nd, 2022 at 10:00 PM. D, consider the approval request from the Fredericksburg Food and Wine Fest Event Coordinator to close parking lane on the South Island Lane of Adams Street adjacent to Mark Potts, between Main Street and Austin Street, beginning on, beginning Thursday, October 20th, 2022 at 7:00 AM until Monday, October 24th, 2022 at noon. E, consider the approval of request from the Craft Gear Festival Event Coordinator, close the parking lane on one South Island, one South Island Lane adjacent to Mark Potts on Adams Street, beginning Friday, June 10th, 2022 at 7:00 AM until Monday, June 13th, 2022 at noon. Those are the items that are in the consent agenda. Is there anyone that needs to be pulled by council? Are you here none? So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Tom, and a second by Jerry. Any further discussion? There is none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Motion carries 5-0. On item eight, I'm going to read the resolution, but we're not going to act on it until we come out of executive session. Consider the approval of 2022-06R, appointing individuals to fill vacancies in the membership of the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, Historical Review Board, and Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Historic Review Board. So we'll get back to that one when we come out of the executive session. Moving on to 9A, consider the approval and purchase of installation of new Christmas lighting for Mark Potts from Decor IQ for $110,501.68. I was waiting for you to sneak up. Andrea Schmidt, our Parks Director. Thank you, Andrea.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I'm bringing you the purchase and the approval of the bid for the new Christmas lights on Market Square. The funding was included in the budget process last year. If you remember, in 2019, we did a full replacement of the Christmas lights on Market Square. At that time, the lights we put up only had a 90-day warranty, so we were able to stretch them out for three years. At this point, we've stretched as far as we can go. So we're going to need to replace all of the lights again. These new lights, though, they have a rubber material in them, so as the trees grow, they can actually stretch a little bit with them. So they have a two-year warranty. So hopefully we can get them to last maybe four years. So the Decor IQ is the same company that did the full installation in 2019, and they've also helped us with repairs the last few years. They're, in addition, they're a buyboard company. Their quote came in at $110,501.68. That is for both installation and the purchase of the lights. So we'll pay for the purchase of the lights now, so we can get this pricing. And then we'll have to keep the rest of the funds available for November after the installation. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best answer.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions?
Mayor, could I add one thing? So the citizens that are here tonight may be tuned in, the expenditure for Christmas lights is not a general fund. In other word, item, in other words, property taxes or sales tax doesn't go to purchase Christmas lights. It's budgeted in the tourism fund, so it's eligible expense through hot funds. So in other words, our tourists are paying for the Christmas lights.
Correct.
Thank you. I do have, who removes the lights that are there?
The park staff will start removing those as soon as it's approved. And then we'll do a good tree trimming this summer when it's really hot, so we'll be ready for the new lights in November.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, council?
So Andrea, are they going to remove them carefully, or are they going to get out, get out the wire cutters and pull?
That's pretty much what we'll do. Yes.
I hope so. Jerry?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Jerry and a second by Bobby. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is none. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Considering receiver court on the Fort Mountain Scott and the former Texas Rangers Heritage Center, Ms. Hume. Is anyone here? Andrea, your name's here.
Jody Ginn was going to do this presentation, but he unfortunately is sick and has been ordered home by a doctor, so we'll have to try to do this at another tone.
Okay, so we'll pass on that one for today. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to 9C, consider and discuss the 2022 Hotel Occupancy Tax Hot Applications. Okay, folks.
So Mayor, the purpose of the, this agenda item is to allow the applicants for hot funding to make any sort of pre-statement they want, or to respond to any questions that the council may have. There's no action scheduled on any of these tonight. The, normally what the council does is take the information, including the information you learned tonight, and then bring us back at your next meeting in two weeks and make a decision at that time.
Okay, so council, do we want to go to tab, and we'll go one by one, see if there's someone here who might want to speak to that. The first one will be the Fredericksburg Education Initiative, the Systems Go. Is there someone here that would like to speak to that, give us a presentation?
Yes, Phil.
Well, I don't know if we have any questions. Did you want to say anything at all about it? I know it's a good, it's a good project.
I'm just glad to be back and have you all here.
Okay. Would you introduce yourself, sir, if you don't mind?
I'm just going to assist, aren't I?
Yes, I am. I know, I know who you are, Phil, now that you get a little closer.
If we all do this, we'll be here all night. But I'm Phil House, CLI, Communications Director for Systems Go, among many other hats. So thank you for your support. For two years, we've not been able to have the public come out to the launches, which are held a stone wall. But this year, we're excited, and we think we can get the families back out there and put up 50 rockets in two days. So.
Very good. Thank you.
We appreciate your support in spreading the word.
Thank you very much, Phil. Hey, the second one is going to be the Chamber of Christmas Parade. Penny is, Penny in? Any comments? Oh, there you are. Okay. Any questions, council?
No.
Okay.
You did a great job.
Next one is the Holy Ghost Lutheran Church. We have, I know you're here. There you are, Bobby. I knew you were in here someplace. Thank you, Bobby. You have any comments, any questions, council? Want to give us a quick blessing?
You bet.
Thank you.
Global Leadership Summit. It'll be the seventh year that we'll bring this to Fredericksburg. It's a high-flying, high-octane of quality leadership event. We do it at the high school auditorium. Usually have about 200 to 300 people from our town that signs up for that. We usually have some people outside the community who stay here for that event, but then extend their stay through the weekend, spending their good money in our community.
I tend to laugher. It's quite an awesome event. Thank you.
That's a quick sermon.
It won't be like that on Sunday.
Do you know the dates?
I'm sorry. August the 4th and 5th. You bet. Thank you for coming always, Bobby.
Okay, number five, number four is the German Choirs of Fredericksburg. Is there anyone here to represent them? James? Okay, any questions, council?
This is lost.
Number five, the Gillespie County Fair Association. Anyone here to represent them?
Brad.
Brad? Okay. Any questions, council?
No.
Great organization. I don't ride the Ferris wheel anymore. Find something that doesn't spin. Thank you. Okay, number six, the Gillespie County Historical District, and that would be David Shields. Thank you. Okay, uh, number six, the Gillespie County Historical District, and that would be David Shields. Any comments?
Yes.
Please.
The Historical Society, not district.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the Historical Society. I don't know why I said history.
Uh, may I have a, a moment to make a pre-statement before your questions, if should there be any?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. We believe that in order to respond to the growing demand for more inclusive stories of Hill Country history, we must enhance our stories by celebrating our diverse culture. The diversity is seen in both the people and its architecture. On the grounds of the Pioneer Museum, we have an excellent example of a Sunday house. Secondly, we want to restore it nearly to its original state and make this house an integral part of the visitor's experience to the Pioneer Museum. We believe with your help, we can restore this historic house, which is one of the mandates for city hot funds, and when completed, integrated into our education and learning center, targeting the growing number of families coming from nearby major metropolitan areas to Fredericksburg looking for family centered events. We believe these two factors contribute to an exciting opportunity to reinvest in our historic properties for the public good and serving the public, and developing the appeal of our campus to attract more families who will want to come to Fredericksburg and stay the night to enjoy the added value of our developing menu, uh, museum. I'd like to add something from the, um, application I made based on my experience of the Texas Association of Museum Conference that I attended last week. So we'd like for this to be included in your consideration. You know, all of this is kind of aesthetic and cultural and warm fuzzy feelings, but you all deal also with numbers, dollars and cents. So looking at the numbers based on the formula provided by Ernie Lothlin, the Convention and Visitor Bureau, the museum generates approximately one hundred and fifty three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in out of country and state visitor spending. This is seven percent of the revenue spent by visitors via the daily rate of hotel room or S T R formula. The full description of this formula is included in the application. Yet a great deal of this attractiveness comes from the subsidy the Gillespie County Historical Society provides the Pioneer Museum by a reduced admission ticket. Recently, I attended, as I said earlier, the Texas Association of Museums and Conference in Waco to share ideas and learn new techniques from museum professionals. One leading professional that shared insights on the concept of well being was Professor John Falk, Executive Director of the Institute for Learning Innovations and C Grant Professor Emeritus of Free Choice Learning at Oregon State University. Dr. Falk has offered over two hundred articles and chapters in the areas of learning, ecology, and education. Two dozen books more help to create several nationally important out of school educational curricula. His most recent book is The Value of Museums: Enhancing Societal Well Being. It's come out this year with Roman Littlefield, which establishes a new way to define and measure the value of cultural and educational experiences. This new measurement, known as the Well Being Index, enables financial planners to quantitatively analyze the performance of human activity. How do you measure quantitatively a person's happiness? What drives this question is establishing that it's not merely the aesthetic and cultural enrichment our public institutions bring us, but also the real dollars these institutions help generate. Dr. Falk broke down this measurement to four categories and describes through complex surveys how these concepts can be measured. For time's sake, here, I will forego this explanation and bring your attention to the basic formula that measures visitors' well being coming to the Pioneer Museum, Ryan's Kirka and the old jail. Here, we take our total operating budget and divide that by our visitor numbers. That comes to roughly fourteen dollars per person, factoring in school trips and adult visitors. Our current admission to these three locations is eleven dollars. This is a difference of over one hundred thousand dollars by aggregate. Our visitors would be willing to spend this amount to enjoy our museum. That's their well being being measured in dollars and cents. Instead, G C H subsidizes this amount, enabling each visitor to have three additional dollars in their pocket to spend in Fredericksburg. When considering the museum is only asking for this amount plus the necessary funds to restore a historic house in Fredericksburg, to be returned to the community as a public location, anchoring that part of the campus to a larger development center designed to pull in more visitors, the combination has come a pelling argument for your support for your only completely independent funded museum in Fredericksburg. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. There, next applicant. Go ahead. I'll get a question. Go ahead.
David, I do have one question. Um, you've asked for a lot of money. You said in your statement, which you read, that this would be an integral part of the visitor's experience. Now, if you look at the floor plan of the building, I understand re, uh, restoring the outside of the building, but if you look at the interior of the building as drawn and understanding it's a preliminary plan, it's an office, a reception area, a break room, and a bathroom. How is that going to be intricate, intricate, integral to the visitor's experience?
Absolutely. So the idea in two phases, and I say phases because we don't know what unusual circumstances happen, another disease, or something that we determine there's a lot of lead and it delays the process. So we say two phased attentively, is the concept that that part of the museum will be one of the primary entrances to the museum. Because what we want to do with that important anchor there in San Antonio, Mylum Street, where there's so much traffic, there's so much interest, is to, with that idea of, I said earlier about, in a more inclusive environment, is to look at ways where we can look at the Comanches that were here and develop a Comanche camp, an area there where people come in and see, what did the Germans first see? So they're going to see firsthand that building where they would, most people would never see a Sunday house. So it's true that they're not going to be going into it to see, uh, say, period, uh, furniture or use it as an interpretive experience that way. It will be the first thing that our program and education directors say, you are standing here at a twentieth century, uh, uh, evolved Sunday house. Please come in and begin this experience. So what we're trying to do is introduce people to see this house where it normally would never even see. Our visitors, probably in Houston or San Antonio, have no idea what a Sunday house is. At least here, they're going to see it, and they're going to have some interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other questions? Okay. We move on now to the Friends of Gillespie County School. And I know we have a representative here, Kim. Is that you? Okay.
Once again, uh, the Friends of Gillespie County Country Schools is, uh, thankful for all the past support you've given to the organization. Uh, this, as you know, has been odd few years with a diminished number of visitors. But even in the, in that, uh, we've managed to have around seven to eight thousand people come and see the country schools. So we're asking for your continued support for this project.
I have a question. Do you see, do you see an end to the complete restoration of all these schools?
No.
Okay, thank you. It's kind of like raking leaves. You get to the yard, then you got to turn around and rake them again. Understand?
You know, these are all one hundred plus year old buildings, so there's always preservation, restoration that has to be done. And the one building that we've yet to get much done to is the, the teacherage at Lukinbaum. And that is going to be a very large project. We continue to search for funds to work on that. But that's, you know, that, there's never an end to this.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, now the Fredericksburg Corral. We have Donna Philpotts. Is she here? Okay. Would you like to make a comment or anything? Any questions, council? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Fredericksburg Country Film Society, which is number nine. Amy Miskowski. I hope I didn't get that too wrong. Good, thank you. Any comments? No comments? Any questions, council? Done? Okay. Moving on to the next one, which will be the Fredericksburg Music Club, and we have Pamela Willhite.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You want to come to the microphone, please, because I know you have a booming voice, but some of these people can't hear so good.
But okay. Um, I'm Pam Willhite, and I do appreciate the opportunity to request your continued help for the Fredericksburg Music Club. I'd like to remind you about, uh, about three things about the club, the music club. In the first place, we started in nineteen thirty seven, so we'll celebrate our eighty fifth birthday this year. At that time, what it started, it was local musicians meeting together to study and talk about music. We now are a five oh one C three. We present eight concerts a year, bringing in not only state, uh, uh, artists, but national and international artists, uh, for the, uh, citizens and, uh, visitors to Fredericksburg. Um, and I would also like to point out that we have no paid staff. All of our administrative work, and there is administrative work to present eight audience, uh, eight concerts a year, is all done by our board members, uh, on a volunteer basis, and we do appreciate your help.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Questions, council? Moving on, uh, we have the Admiral Emmett's Museum, I mean, Foundation, I apologize. Steve Lutz. Steve, are you? Okay, well, I was going to say, you got a, I didn't see an I E. on there, so I was, you know, I thought I had it right. Thank you. Would you like to say something, please?
Well, first of all, we would like to thank you for your ongoing support, and, um, we.
We can, I'm sorry, introduce yourself. You may have, but I didn't catch it.
Ruth Ann Hattori. I'm the marketing director.
Thank you.
Museum.
Thank you.
Um, and we are certainly, um, honored and proud to be part of this community and continue to work as hard as we can to be a great, um, attraction here as well as contributing to the community. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Questions? Done? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oktoberfest, B C A A, Debbie Ray is the event coordinator. I know Debbie, you're here somewhere. I saw you. Any question, council? None? You do a great job. Thank you. Fredericksburg Food and Wine Fest. That'd be Debbie again. I mean, Debbie Ray, not Debbie again. Uh, any questions?
No, I have a question for Ken. Last, uh, last year, we took so Food Wine Fest off. Did we, did we fund that with hotel occupancy tax? I mean, later, we did it later, though, right? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Hill Country Run Motorcycle. Why don't you just keep standing? Thank you, Debbie. Any questions? None? Okay, thank you again. Fredericksburg Rotary Club Foundation Incorporated. Thank you for staying standing, Debbie. Any questions? Yeah, come up and kind of explain it a little bit, Debbie, please. Since this is new, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you. I know you've got a lot to consider this evening. The Fredericksburg Craft Beer Festival is being put on by the Rotary Club, the Noon Rotary Club, which meet on Mondays. And they have, for many years, wanted to do a Texas Craft Beer Festival. So they have contracted me to assist them with this project. Friday night, we'll have a competition, awards and dinner at Altstadt Brewery. And then on Saturday, we'll have the one day event on Market Square from ten thirty to eight. And the, um, monies raised will go towards their fundraising programs. One of them is the Grace Center, and the others are scholarships and things like that in the community. So they're excited about it, but it is a brand new event.
So participants can come from Texas only, or?
Correct.
Just Texas crafts? Okay, good. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm just curious, Debbie, um, will there be an admission charge to this?
There will be. It's twenty dollars.
Do they get like one big mug?
No mugs.
Oh, gee, okay.
So, uh, advertising, this is all going to be used for advertising outside of the community?
Oh, yes.
Any idea where?
Texas Highways, um, and Texas Monthly Social Media, and TourTexas.com. Lots of social media and some other print advertising in the region.
You know, this event will turn to a three day event.
If that, that is their goal.
Thank you. Okay, anymore? Thank you.
Thank you.
Fredericksburg J C's, uh, Sherry Bumpus. There you are. Any questions? I'll do a good job, especially the crawfish. Okay, um, Ryan's Gil, Will Gil, I got it right. Janine Rothberg. Okay, thank you. Would you like to say anything? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't ask for you to, for the J C's, so I apologize. Any comments? Good, okay. Anything you'd like to say?
I have a lot of filmers.
Good.
The film show brought in one hundred and sixty one percent of people they expected.
Good, good. Do you, do you find these filters, men, women, old, young?
Yes.
Or just a whole bunch of everybody, huh?
Mostly women, uh, men, they get, they're not convinced for sexuality, so, um, I'm a film producer. In the preparation of the show, and this film guy, the, 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 the.
Okay, good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Texas Hill Country Higher Education Development Foundation. We have Mary Little. Dom, okay, thank you, Dom. Do you want to make a comment? Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, we're making two requests for hot funds. One, you funded several times before, which is the Forging Futures Golf Classic, which will be April twenty third, twenty fourth, uh, twenty three. And I won't go into that unless there are questions. The, the second request we're making is a new event. It's called the Chicken Fest. It's going to be September the seventeenth, held on the grounds of Hill Country University Center. It will be a family friendly event. Think Stonewall or Dos Fish Fry. It will be by donation, and there will be, uh, music. There'll be games for, for the children, and, uh, hopefully some educational material provided. Okay, please, there's no changes from the applications.
Okay, so you're speaking for both applications at least? Okay, good. And that would be application, um, nineteen as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So the, the funds raised from both the, uh, the Chicken Fest and the, uh, the golf tournament are used for scholarships?
Yes, scholarships as well as academic development and maintenance operation of Hill Country University Center.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, our, our center doesn't receive any public funds, per se. We're one of, I think, the only campus that anyone is aware of that doesn't have public funding coming into its higher education. We're doing our best to try to support ourselves with fundraisers.
Can you share with us the, uh, amount of money you've made in the past?
Yes, we netted on the last Forging Futures, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just over a hundred and fifty thousand.
So now you have chicken.
Chicken. I don't think it's going to raise as much, but we're going to get to a different, uh, audience, and I think it will have value. Thank you, Ken.
I might add, you know, years ago, they had, uh, at the World's Fair here, had a chicken flying contest. If you'd be interested in, in using that as a promotional tool, I think it'd be a lot of fun to watch.
I, I think that'd be a lot of fun, Mr. Mayor.
So when you have time, give me a hour. I'll let you know what it's all about.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun to watch those chickens.
Do you still have your plunger charm?
No, but it's a very simple concept. All right, thank you very much. Moving on, uh, our next one is going to be the Fredericksburg Farmers Market, and we have I don't see a name yet. Mark, thank you. Okay, Mark. You want to make any comments? Okay. Any questions, council?
Hopefully we'll see all of them there. Really?
Well, you bet. Okay. Our next one is the former Texas Rangers, uh, Foundation. And I know it goes not here this, or, oh, you showed up. Okay, good. Okay. 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 Okay, well, we have any questions? We'll sure ask you. Any questions, council?
No.
It's a great facility out there. Uh, I've been to the, what do you call that thing? You call it jail? What's that really called? Yeah, where the jailhouse is. Is that what it's called? A jailhouse?
Goose cow.
Oh, okay, I'm gonna tell you what, you don't wanna go to jail there. That's a tough place to be in. Okay.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, please.
What you're requesting is about twice as much as last year. Do you have any, can you explain to us why the increase? What I asked was, what you're asking for hot funds is about twice as much as you've asked in the past?
It were.
But on for the Texas Rangers, I think, opposing.
Right. Well, I was just curious, because I know we gave you this much last year, or at least that's what you requested last year. And, thank you, Tom. And I'm just curious, you know, that's, you're asking for quite a bit of money. And so I'm just curious where the money goes exactly. What are you, what do you use the money for exactly? And how many people come to the event, about 300?
We've got about 3,000 members and fellow students all over the state of Texas. On this last day, we were in Houston, Dallas, and the county's on, these papers, and maybe that's worth a while.
And you charge an admission for these events? You charge an admission charge? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Okay, the next applicant is the same, Texas former Texas Rangers Foundation, which is number 22. Any questions on that one? Then moving to 23, their counselor, Von Fredericksburg, Stacy Yansky. Stacy, would you like to make a comment? Louise, okay, thank you, any questions on that? Counselor? No, thank you. Excuse me, 24, the Fredericksburg Theater Company, Steve Riley. Oh, there you are. Hell of a production those kids did, buddy. That was fabulous, fabulous. And then you know what, I'm gonna make a public announcement. If y'all haven't been to any of their productions out there, you're missing something. And there's something for everybody. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, no, thank you, Steve. Mom Center, Nicole Davis, are you here? Nicole, okay. Any questions? No questions. There's Stadish Friedhof, Harry Bond. I don't think Harry's here.
I'm here in his stead.
I'm glad you are, 'cause he talks way too much.
Again, thank you, council, for your previous contributions to our donations to the cemetery. We're asking for funds, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. This is the beginning project to try to control water if we ever get any again. But we've had significant erosion problems across the cemetery, and this is the beginning of the project to try to divert the water and to fix the road, so we will have less of that. And this is just the beginning of the project.
Thank you, thank you.
Is the city gonna do any of the paving or any of that? Or do we? Do we?
The city cemetery, I don't know. You heard the question? Did you hear the question?
Y'all vetted it out, or on the paving and that, or?
We did.
Do we have the city have time for it, or?
I don't believe that's a public ride of way. We generally don't.
I think it's privately owned.
Oh, right, that makes sense.
Even though it used to go to city cemetery.
Right.
And then y'all changed the name, so we can't pronounce it.
No, that's not public roads, of course, in the cemetery. We did appreciate that there was some help, but-
It always takes a lot of, lot of work out there. My brother was on that cemetery ward back then.
We appreciate any consideration you give.
Thank you. Okay, the last applicant is the Fourth of July Parade and Program, that'd be Daryl Whitworth. Daryl, I know, I saw you in here a while ago. Stand up so we can see you, buddy. Thank you. This guy does a hell of a job putting that on, and I don't know who's gonna do it after you leave.
You can't leave.
No, sir, not at all, not at all.
You're ended for life.
Any questions? I do, I do have one question. I think it's a heck of a parade. I have one question, Daryl, and I usually answer this to the other, is this enough money for you? Because that's, that's quite a production you put on. And do you? Okay, good. And you do all this on, you get, how much for doing this? Thank you.
You get school board, Daryl, you get school board trustee pay?
I might get a little less than that, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm gonna tell you, these are all, all great organizations and their requests. I will ask the city attorney, these all have been vetted and meet all the criteria of their application?
There were a few applications that had some, some things that need to be corrected, and I worked with the city secretary, and she contacted the applicants, and they had just made some errors on their applications. Once we got those all fixed, everything is, complies with the tax code.
Thank you. And I may have missed it, it's 700 and something thousand that is requested, and what do we actually have?
We budgeted 500,000 this year.
So we're about 200,000 short or so, okay.
Charlie, I also wanted to see secretary to confirm whether the applicants from last year have all met their requirements, as far as reported. Charlie?
So the last day to make your report is actually April the 30th, and there are just a few of them out.
Have they been notified of that? Are they aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item, agenda number 10, public comments on items that are not listed in the agenda. We have, we have six people that have signed up. You'll have, you'll introduce yourselves, you'll have three minutes, you'll hear a one-minute warning sound, and when the time is up, you'll have the next sound. Ruben Aguilar, if you'll come up, please. And Mo Saidee, you're on deck.
Good evening, city council. My name is Ruben Aguilar, I'm a longtime resident of Fredericksburg. I'm gonna talk about things that nobody else is talking about. Really angry at what is happening. I mean, I understand everybody's arguing and fighting for local issues, but there's much more. Look at what is happening in our country. Our country's really, really in a downward spiral. They're wanting to take away medical help from our veterans, from the VA, to give it to people who have no business coming here. That's just wrong, man. Everything I've ever said here has been the truth. I told you all that in 2018, I told the courts the post office was spying on us. They said I was delusional and paranoid. Well, it's on the news again, they're spying on us. I told you all the FBI are a corrupt organization, a criminal organization, and it's all over. It's all over the news. I told you all the police are doing their dirty work. And on the next meeting, we all saw them here giving us a show of force, trying to intimidate us and silence us, instead of patrolling the streets, protecting the public, earning your tax dollars? Nope, they were here as if we were the criminals. I told you so many things that they are now coming true. Robert Kennedy Jr. told us, at the anti-mandate rally, they are engaging in asymmetric warfare against patriotic American citizens. How they are trying to get us banned from everywhere so we can't buy the things that we need to survive. I am an example of this. Everyone is aware of what they are doing against me. I'm harassed where I buy groceries, where I pay bills, and especially at the post office. And they don't want anyone associating with me, because they don't want people to know the truth. But if you see me being harassed at these places, the grocery stores, department stores, cell phone stores, and especially at the post office, please record it. Because when we take back the Senate and the House, we need to change laws to hold people accountable. That they come after you just because you think differently? Look at what is happening in our country, in our schools, indoctrinating children as young as four and five into transgenderism. Ever wonder why so many pedophiles are moving to Curville and Fredericksburg? Because they are being welcomed, accepted, tolerated, protected, especially on some of those online groups in Curville. I could never figure out, why are they being protected on here, man? Until now, I look, and now it makes sense. It is my opinion that all of you who are on these groups are also a bunch of creeps. Why else would you be on these groups, these scum? This country's in a lot of trouble. They're trying to destroy it. I warned you all about all these dangers of overpopulation, food shortages, fuel shortages, and so much more, and now it's coming true. Everything I have ever told you has been the truth. When I get up here, I don't fight for STR, even though we are landlords. You never hear me fighting about STRs. I'm fighting for my country. I'm fighting for my veterans, and I'm fighting for the American people, whose ancestors went and fought and died in the wars so that we could be here, okay?
Thank you very much for your comments. Mo, and then we have Tom Marshall on deck.
Okay, my name is Mo Saidee. I'm speaking on behalf of the Stone Ridge Subdivision residents. This has to do with the STRs. The very first time that I went to the STR workshop, that was February 16, and it was a serious issue. We were concerned that perhaps some STRs could creep into our subdivisions inadvertently, and we wanted to protect it. So I had a suggestions for the board of PNZ, and that was to make a change to the application, the permit for the STR. In that regard, if somebody comes and asks for it, if that property is in the deeded restricted subdivision with the HOA, they need to provide a certified letter to the city before the city can proceed with the approval of the permit. In a nutshell, that was the case. That was February 16 at the university. And I left early, but I got word that PNZ agreed to me. Subsequent to that, on February 17, I have all of the records here, Ms. Polly Recker sent me the notice in the text message that said PNZ unanimously agreed to your suggestion to implement that. So I was very happy sitting there. I also came back to the second workshop of the STR with the same suggestions. And I, you know, Mr. Bailey was sitting there, Mr. Lutz was sitting there, and I presented that, and I was getting positive responses. Subsequent to that, I spoke with Mr. Lutz. He and I, he agreed that he would implement that. As a matter of fact, I confronted him today outside, and he said yes. He admitted that we had that conversation, and he agreed to implement that change. So when the April 1st was coming up, I kind of sent a text to Shelley that says, ordinance is going into effect, is this change happening? Well, that's when the thing started unraveling, and the finger-pointing started going here and there. So I am, to be honest with you, I'm very frustrated with this whole process. I came with a good faith effort. It was a serious issue with our residents at the subdivision. I went through PNZ, I went through the two workshops, I presented the whole thing, I covered with the right people, and I was understanding, I was under-understanding that it was all agreed upon, and obviously, nobody had any opposition to it. And now I'm beginning to feel like this has fallen into a crack, and nobody is paying attention to it. So the frustration stems from the fact that we come here in a good faith effort, and we bring a serious issue to this council, and I appreciate all of you guys' effort, and I admire what you all do. But there is no, there is no accountability for what we bring forward. If I had not asked, on March 24th, I send an email to Shelley requesting what happened to this thing, and it unraveled. If I had not asked, it would have gone nowhere. And that is not the way to treat the citizens when they bring a serious issue. And we're required to have a decent response. If you disagree with it, tell us why you disagree with it when PNZ has agreed unanimously at the board, and Mr. Lutz agreed to it.
Thank you, your time is up. Do we wanna?
I have all the records here.
I know you do, Mo, you're good. Do we wanna respond to that? Kent, or Daniel?
I can give a brief response. Mo, we, so I do remember you bringing that issue up, and there are, there was a section added to the ordinance. It doesn't talk about the permit, but it does discuss deed restrictions. I don't know if you've seen that in there. If your request is for something in the permit specifically, the permits, the form of the permits, the permit is not specified in the ordinance, it's really left up to, I think, the city manager to promulgate that form, or the director of Development Services, I can't recall which one. But so there, so there was a section added to the final ordinance that mentions that the STR ordinance doesn't supersede deed restrictions, and the more restrictive of the two would apply. But I think there may be an administrative way still to potentially accomplish what you want to accomplish. So without, without, without having to address it in the ordinance itself. So I don't know, I can't speak for Development Services. I think they're probably with some concern with knowing which HOA, you know, where the HOAs are, and which ones are active, which ones are inactive. So I guess, I guess the short answer is that the permit application and the processing of that is administrative, and I think can still be handled administratively as far as some changes that may address your concern. I can't speak for Development Services as far as what, you know, what they can do to help you all with that.
Anna, are you, are you, you understanding what he wants? And are we, are we processing applications with that kind of information?
Tom, you'll have to step back a second. Sorry, buddy.
Yeah, I think the concern is the, on the administrative level, all right? Actually accepting the application and putting the onerous on the city when we don't have the authority to do anything about it. We can put a statement that we do not enforce deed restrictions. That's, that's as much as we can do. I don't know how we could enforce them to provide a certified letter or something from HOAs, because we don't know which neighborhoods have HOAs, which ones are active, which one have these. So I didn't feel comfortable adding anything that was gonna come back to staff when it's something that we can't control anyway. And if they really wanna protect their neighborhood, they could change the zoning to R3 that doesn't allow it. That would be the only way.
One minute. Start the clock over there.
First of all, I'm aware of the language that is in the ordinance. That language talks about if there is a inconsistencies or between the ordinance and the city and others, the most stringent requirement takes hold. That has nothing to do with what I'm suggesting, number one. Number two, the entire suggestion was exactly the opposite of what she said. It's not to put the pressure on the city, it was to put the pressure on the owner, the proprietor, who comes forward to ask for the permit. He or she has to define and specify where that property resides, and if she has to put down there that it is in the deeded restriction and provide the letter from the HOA. In fact, it would protect the city, I argued, for future liability. It would also allow us, our HOA, to come forward, and we know exactly what went on with that permit. So it is good for all of us, it's a low-cost effort, and it doesn't, I don't know why we're arguing these things for weeks.
Thanks, Mo.
Charlie, I talked to Mo today, just right before the meeting, and I told him we'd get him a response. And so let staff, you know, get Daniel and Clint and I get together tomorrow, and I think Mo deserves a response. We'll get him one.
Well, absolutely, a more clearer response possibly. All right, Tom, you're up. Mary Lee Marshall, you're on deck. You know the format, right?
Sure do.
Okay.
My name is Tom Marshall, I'm a city resident. I'm wondering if it's not time for this city to have a physical taken. We're 175 years old, right? It's probably way past due. When we look at the city, we see lots of great things. Kent tells us every week about, or every month, about the good things that the employees are doing. We hear lots of great things in the paper, letters to the editor that are raving about us. However, you know that a great- However, you know that a great-looking person can have some underlying serious physical conditions that can cause a lot of damage. I think Fredericksburg has some of those things. Some of the other good things, you know, we look at the city, all the parades that we have, celebrations, the festivals, whatnot, all of those are great things. We've got a booming economy. We're already talking about the Solar Eclipse event in 2024. There are so many good things going on. I hope we don't get distracted and not look at the other side of the coin. Are there cancers growing? Are we going to increase our spending by 107% in the next 10 years? Is that a good thing? Is that something a healthy body would do? Do we look at the crime and the drugs in this city? Now, there may not be much that you, as the city council, can directly do with that, but at least talk about it and get some emphasis on those people that can correct those issues. Do we know and understand the full repercussions of signing an open-end contract with the federal government? Have we healed from COVID? Should we just move on or look back for lessons learned? Are we prepared for a repeat of COVID? Have businesses healed from COVID? I know several examples that I would say, no. There are construction eyesores around the city that seem to not be getting attention. Is that a sign of something not going good? The agendas over the past months have not reflect any actions on any of these type of topics. The only thing that I can think that is or has been, Derry's comments about the redevelopment of the playground at the Mark Lutz. That was an eyesore, a problem, whatnot, and he continually talked about, you know, the progress of fixing that issue. As leaders, find some issues that need help and just get something done about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mary Lee, and then Jeanette Haruth, you're on deck.
I'm Mary Lee Marshall. I live in the city. I've heard many people say, well, I'm glad somebody wants to be on the city council at the hard job for not much pay. Well, if the people in the government would do the job they were sworn to do, they would have a much easier job. An example is the headache with the STRs. The city council years ago decided to offer an exemption to the city charter in regards to home occupation rules. If they hadn't done that, residential zones would not be flooded with non-owner occupied STRs. How many headaches has that short-sighted decision caused? How many hours have you spent arguing over how to fix the STR problem? What do we do about the noise and the disturbance it's causing the residents? Another example is the ARPA money. The truth is, that contract is with the federal government, and signing it was a violation of law and the Constitution, because there was no discussion whatsoever before it was signed, not with the people, maybe between yourselves, among yourselves. It violates the right of the people, because the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution prevent federal interference. The city charter is supposed to shield this city from state interference. You sign the ARPA contract, which opens the door. Unless somebody in this government has the guts to stand up and say, no. This contract is bull. It's an open-ended contract, and it means nothing. And by the way, I agree with everything Ruben said. This country is in serious trouble. And you've got your head stuck in the sand, worried about noise ordinances.
Thank you, Mary. Jeanette and Elsa Rup, you're on deck.
Yes, I'm Jeanette, and I live in the city. So this evening, as in other council meetings, on the agenda, the city council has placed a number of items for public input and comment. A packet of information with pertinent details, costs, facts, et cetera, is always provided for public review and the city council consideration before a public vote is ultimately taken by the council whether or not to approve these items. Though today's agenda items were rather benign, for instance, they cover various temporary street closures for October fests, food and wine fests, and the like. The city council is nevertheless abiding faithfully to the proper procedure of seeking public input, consensus, and participation before a final vote, all in an open, transparent process. That's great. This cannot be said, though, for the $2.8 million contract signed by our city manager to the federal government, known as the American Rescue Plan Act. According to the city charter, it is the city council who have been explicitly granted the responsibility for approval of government contracts. Nowhere in the charter has this authority been granted to the city manager. At no time has the city council given public approval for the signing of the contract. At no time has the city council disclosed the important details, particularly as it relates to the controversial terms, conditions, and obligations as contract demands upon the city and all who receive these funds. At no time was this placed on the agenda for public hearing, participation, discussion, or input. At no time was there a public vote whether or not to accept these funds. Furthermore, the city manager has many times put forth misinformation, blatant falsehoods regarding these funds, and the serious ramifications they pose both financially, constitutionally, and morally. The language in this contract is unprecedented. It includes compliance with stroke of the pen executive orders, which can be issued at any time for anything, extensive reporting, monitoring, and surveillance requirements, severe penalties for noncompliance such as return of all funds, seizing of assets, et cetera. The city council and the city manager are in violation of the city charter, their oath of office, and the U.S. and Texas constitutions. This issue has been brought publicly to the council's intentions on numerous occasions and by multitudes of people, both public and written comments, and in the serving of several hundred legal notices and affidavits. The city council and the city manager's refusal to appropriately redress the people's grievances is a dereliction of duty, an abuse of power, and a maladministration. The people have come peacefully, patiently, and in goodwill, seeking proper remedy. It is incumbent upon the council to now fulfill their responsibility faithfully to the people before legal consequences take effect.
Thank you, Jeanette. Yeah, I'm going to get you to pronounce your name, and if you're a city resident or not.
It's Ila, and yes, I live in Fredericksburg.
Thank you.
So you might recall, the last time I was here, I spoke on policing, and I have spoken on policing.
Could you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
I have spoken on policing a few times. This is an area near and dear to my heart, and an area that I worked in for many years. So like the final public comment, I agree that there's a lot of problems. Things not coming to light need to come to light, and I mean that very much in a spiritual sense in this community. I had a dream, Christmas Eve, way back in 2017, that God was going to come down on this community and shine his light real bright, and anyone who chooses to stay in the dark and be deceitful and dishonest is going to be found out. And the policing comes to mind, but like the people say, it's rampant in our society. And there's a lot of nice things, but they're all very worldly things. And I think what the people want is to see some additional moral backbone in this community. And in terms of law enforcement, I believe that there is no moral backbone in terms of leadership in any of our law enforcement. It's very nice, there's very good people in there, people that want to do the right thing, but if you don't have adequate training and moral leadership, people are going to do the wrong thing. Just because someone goes into a police academy does not make them a moral person. Now, you started at the beginning by talking about this wellness check, and in this case, it worked well for this lady. However, my friend Diane had the police go to her house and take her out for no reason when she was 80, okay? For no reason other than the fact that she wrote somebody out of her will, and it was a personal vendetta to take her down to the jail overnight. So, and then about a year ago, I had a dream also that the police in this community would go so far as to beat up someone in a hospital bed. And lo and behold, the next day, this man came to me and said, look, the police came and beat me up in my hospital bed while I was getting treatment for MRSA. These are the photos, all right? Now, Susan Data Slur took action in 2018, and the taxpayers footed a huge bill for that court case, right? People are going to need to be fired from the community. You know, Diane, when she went to Buddy Mills, he said to her, he didn't care. He didn't care what had happened to her at 80, pulled out of her house for a personal vendetta. I'm sorry, but this is really, there's good people, but in terms, it's the worst law enforcement leadership I've seen since the 70s. That means it's 50 years behind the times.
Elsa, your time is up. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, that was the last individual who signed up. Now we're going to move on to number 11, the city manager's report. Kent?
Okay, Mayor and Council, a few items on the city manager's report, and I'll start with the, I'll handle the first couple of items, and then I'll turn to, I think Clinton and Anna are going to help me with a couple of items. First off, we do have a final date and time for the next joint meeting between the city council and county commissioners. These are meetings that we generally hold four or five times a year to work together on cooperative projects. So that meeting is now scheduled for April 26 at 8:30 in the morning, so you can cross off the other dates that we had talked about in the past. The county has agreed, all the county commissioners, all the city council has agreed to April 26 at 8:30. So far, we've had four agenda items suggested for that meeting, and the next week or so we'll finalize that agenda. But one of the most important items we'll be discussing is the Fire Chief's recommendation for the third fire station site. He has been working, gathering data on the preferred location for the next fire station, and he'll present his report at that meeting. We also will have a report on the plans to upgrade our fire EMS communication system. This is a project that our fire department's been working with the other volunteer fire departments in the county, and they've got a plan, they've got a budget estimate that they want to present to the city and the county at that meeting. We will also have an update on the sports park. We have new information to share with the council on the sports park with regard to the easement, with regard to the wastewater treatment and watering of the fields. There's just a lot of new information to share. We'll have an update on the fundraising by the soccer association and other information to share on the sports park at that meeting. And then the other item that has been suggested is a report from Vince Michelle, our housing coordinator. I think it's time to hear from him. He'll be in town then, and some of the county officials have not had an opportunity to meet him, so he will give a summary of his first couple of months on the job, what he's learned about our housing situation, and what his recommendations are to move forward. So that'll be a good report from Vince at that meeting. So that's what we have so far for that joint meeting on the 26th. Any questions to the council?
Where is it at?
That will be at the...
I train Marquise. So can I have a question on Vince Michelle? Is he going to give a briefing to the council or council members at any time?
He's available with you. I will, in fact, he's in town. I seen Daniel met with him this afternoon, and I'll meet with him tomorrow. Would you like to meet with him while he's here? Okay. Any of the rest of y'all want to do a one-on-one with him before the 26th? Let me know, and I'll try to schedule it. Kathy? I don't know. I know he's here through tomorrow, so.
At some point.
I'll check with him tomorrow and find out.
Yeah.
He gave me a draft report. I think he's got it down with it.
Okay.
Okay. Are you going to make that available?
Oh, yeah. It's pretty detailed, and I'm going to ask him to summarize that for the meeting, 26th, because it's about 20 pages. Okay, moving forward, next month, we start a mid-year budget process. Reminder to the council that once we get our March revenues and expenditure reports from finance, which is usually around the 20th to the 25th of the month, we go through and we review all of our revenues and expenses through the half of the fiscal year, and we discuss any major discrepancies in our budget at the mid-year point. This year, not aware of any major items other than fuel cost. Last year, if you'll remember, in the summertime, our fuel was much lower a price than what it is now, and so we may need to make some adjustments to our larger departments like police and public works and their fuel budgets. But we'll be talking about that and other budget issues as part of the mid-year budget process. Just kind of let you know that that's forthcoming in about 30 days.
Do you want to jump down to D?
Yeah, sure. D, we have closed out the applications for police chief, and we're pleased to report that we received three applications. Again, the recruitment was internal only, because our current chief, Wes, has done a good job preparing his officers for leadership positions in the department. He's known that he's going to retire, and he's gotten them well-versed on the police department and ready for promotional opportunities. So we have three individuals that have applied for this position, Braxton Raymer, who's sitting at the back of the room, Brian Borhauer, and Chris LaY. Those three individuals have done a great job for the city for many years, and they are the finalists for our position. So we are going to have public presentations next Monday night. For those of you that may not know, we have agreed that the public should have an opportunity to meet the finalists, get to hear them a little bit, speak about their background, and tell us a little bit about themselves, and then respond to questions for the public. So a week from today, 6 o'clock, at the Cardinal Room at the golf course, all three of the finalists will be there to present the information and answer your questions. So we encourage, I know the council, and we will host that as a possible forum of the council in case most of the councilors attend that. So anything else, and also following that, we'll have actual interviews coming up in the next couple of weeks, and we're actually doing a combination of staff involved on the interview panel, plus we're bringing in some police, some individuals with law enforcement backgrounds to be part of the panel. So I believe we have a seven-person panel that will be actually doing the interviews, and the goal is to have somebody hired around the first of May.
Good, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to C, and I think Lynn, you're going to take, okay, Hannah?
Hannah has the latest information on this. We're going to let her update the council.
We have some things on the screen we want to show too. Is that right?
I don't know if you grabbed that, but Granicus is our online...
I don't know if you grabbed that, but Granicus is our online software system that we've been working with. April first is gonna be the live date. But the data done from Avenue has gone pretty well, so they've got all of our, most of the data from Avenue that we have. And we expect to be able to take online registration and payment tomorrow. So we were having final meetings with them today and going through the last little details on that. So it should be up and live hopefully tomorrow, if not by Wednesday. But just wanted to recognize that Shelby and Development Services and Janelle and Finance and Ted and Code Enforcement have been very diligent about getting this done on time. So we're a couple of days late, but it's not for lack of trying.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, we'll move to E. Is that gonna be you, Clinton?
Yes, sir, that's me.
Development Services Department update?
So as you're aware, we're without a Development Services Director now. I'd like to start out by saying that this is very unfortunate for the organization. It's very unfortunate for Mr. Lutes. Jason did a lot of great work in the last year for the city, and we are certainly grateful for that. We wish Jason well in his future endeavors. So from here, we begin picking up the pieces, moving forward, making a new transition with the department. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow now that the issue has been finalized, talking about next steps. As you know, Anna just gave the update on Granicus. We're moving forward with a number of very large items. We have the comp plan coming up. Right now, we're pushing that effort back just a little bit to give ourselves a little bit of breathing room. I personally think that's something that would be very important for a new director to be involved in, and that person to be familiar with the community and some of the community leaders that will be involved in that process moving forward. So we'll be talking about that just a little bit more, and then also talking about advertising and filling the position. So as Jason mentioned earlier today, we went through this process a little bit over a year ago. And I don't think there's any argument that he did rise to the top very quickly. That was the consensus of council, of staff, B and Z, and so forth. I think we were very lucky to find a person like that. So our hope is to find a replacement sooner than later moving forward. There is a lot going on, but we do have excellent staff in the department, and I'm confident that we'll be able to cover all the bases. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
I'm just curious, who's been handling on the Development Services activities in absence?
That has been Anna primarily, with Shelby's assistance. But we have a number of people in the department that are filling the gaps as they come open. So we will sit down tomorrow. We've had some discussions at the staff level. I've had some discussions with Kent. Moving forward, we'll have a plan in place, and we'll announce that to the council a little bit later this week in terms of assignments and interim roles and so.
Just curious, Anna's been in charge of the comp plan. Are there some meetings scheduled with consultants?
Right, we did go through the selection process after we received submittals and narrowed down the field to two consultants. Originally, we had planned on conducting interviews on April sixth. We have contacted those two consultants and let them know that that process will be delayed.
How long do you think?
It's hard to say at this point, and again, that's something we'll be talking a little bit more about tomorrow. At least a couple of months, I would say. Again, potentially upwards of six months, just depending on if we can get somebody on board. Again, I think it's important for the department director to be involved in that process. It's a very lengthy process. It's a very involved process. And we would hope that person would have a little bit of, be familiar with the community, the council, B and Z, and so forth before we entered into that process. But again, that hasn't been decided. That's just my thought at this point.
I don't know if you're interested in my thought, but I think that the comprehensive plan is probably one of the most important things we have to tackle right now, and the sooner the better. I don't really understand the delay in hiring a consultant. I mean, we have only kind of two options, and we've worked with at least one of them before. And Anna has been overseeing this process, so it would be my recommendation, although I'm, it's not my jurisdiction, but that we move forward practically immediately to do this. I think waiting six months is way too long. We've already waited a year now, and we talked about, this isn't the budget for next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, I hope that, I don't know what the other council members think, but I hope that we can move forward as very quickly as possible. And we have a professional person here who's overseeing this, so it's my opinion.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'm not in favor of that, moving quickly and fast. I'm in favor of slower process. Just because Anna's taken on half of that hat doesn't mean she has another half a hat that she has to be involved with staff. I think their plates are full up there with all the transitions that's gonna be going on in the next several months. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it as quickly as we can, but I think staff recommendation is when they're ready to move forward. I feel the new directors definitely needs to be involved with this, you know, situation, because it's gonna be his purview or her, when I say he, I mean, of guys, you know, to be doing that, so.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council also, and I've talked to Clinton about this, because I knew there's gonna be some discussion on this. And the other entity that we haven't heard from that's very important to this discussion is the Planning and zoning commission. So I've asked Clinton to pose this to the Planning and zoning commission at their next meeting on what they think about delaying this and do they wanna move forward. And so I think that's going to come up for discussion. So you'll get some input from Planning and zoning commission on this issue too, I believe.
Any other comments? Thank you, Clinton. Okay, moving on, council comments. Jerry, I'll start with you. Bobby?
No comment.
Kathy?
No comment.
Tom?
No comment.
I got one. I wanna thank all the staff and folks that put on the truck event. I will tell you what, you know, me and kids, I love the little rugrats, and they were swarming everywhere. I wanna thank all those that provided ice cream and cotton candy. I'm sure some parents weren't excited about the cotton candy when it was stuck in their hair. I don't wanna say I was the biggest kid there or the oldest, well, I wasn't the biggest kid, but I certainly was the oldest kid there. I went by all of the folks and had them demonstrate their equipment to me, and I'm telling you what, it's pretty impressive stuff out there. But what's important is that equipment doesn't move unless there's an operator who knows what they're doing. So again, thank everyone who was involved with that. I don't wanna mention names, because you always exclude some heck of an event. And I will tell you, an opportunity, if you've got little ones, or if you're interested, go to the next one. It is well worth it. That's all I have. Thank you.
I would agree with that, Charlie, that it started several years ago. We did have it last year, but it's an amazing event, and if you didn't go to it, you need to go to it. It's a lot of fun, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items for future agenda.
Okay, Mayor and council, in your agenda packet, the last page of your packet is the preliminary listing of agenda items for your April eighteenth meeting. And just mention a couple of these for your information. We will have, by now, we're slated to have the presentation on our annual audit at that meeting. And I think the council and the community will be very pleased with the numbers in that annual audit. I looked at some preliminary numbers on Friday that Laura had, and we ended up last year in great financial shape. And you'll see our general fund, fund balance has increased significantly. So you'll have that report. And then Laura, on an annual basis, she's required to bring back to the council the investment policy for your review and approval, so that will be on. We're hoping the council will be prepared to make some decisions on the allocation of hot funding at your next meeting. Of course, item five will not be on the agenda, so we can pull the number five item. We won't be prepared for that. Item six is a request from Atmos on suspending a, I'm sorry, a request actually from our coalition of cities to suspend the recent rate increase request from Atmos. And so this will be an ordinance that we clearly do to give us more time to consider the rate proposal from Atmos. We have, I believe, a debt collection contract from municipal court fines. Is that right, Daniel? Is that still on track, you think? Okay. Cross Mountain, the cross replacement presentation by Rotary Club, I believe that's still on. The agreement with the soccer association and Fair Eastman, I believe that's gonna be ready for council to consider. Update on records management ordinance and plans, we're moving that back some more, aren't we, Clinton, or Shelley? So that will not be on. We're ready to go on the final lease agreement with the Texas Center for Wine and Culinary Arts, otherwise known as Flavory Texas now. That's their new name. And so staff has had an opportunity to meet with Ernie and the members of the board, and we've gotten all the issues, I think, worked out on the extension of utilities and sidewalks and so forth for that facility. So we'll have that on your agenda. And then we'll have a contract award for small water main replacement program. So, oh, one other item I'd like to add to the agenda is to, an executive session for the council to begin discussing on how you wanna proceed with filling the city attorney position. We're not, certainly not gonna fill that immediately, but we need at least start the recruitment process. And I would recommend we have some sort of overlap, gonna bring the new city attorney on before Daniel Lee so that they have an opportunity to maybe work together a little bit. So we'll talk about that a little bit and get council direction on that. Okay, anything else you'll have?
Kent, I've got one thing. When we, you know, Rotary Clubs in our community do a lot of great work for us, and we have three. So I think whenever we put anything in that Rotary Club's doing, we need to make sure that we are identifying which Rotary Club, whether it's the Morning Club or the Noon Club or the Nimitz Rotary Club, because the Cross Mountain Park Cross Replacement, I believe, is a project of the Nimitz Club. I believe you're right, but we'll start doing that, Tom. You're right.
Good point, good point.
Yep, make sure they get the proper recognition. Okay, good.
Anything else? Okay, with that being said, we're moving to executive session. The city council recesses its open meeting and reconvene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.086, certain public power utilities competitive matters, 551.07.074 personnel matters, and Section 551.071 from consultation with attorney A. Consider and discuss the assignment of the city's rider per refusal under the gentex agreement with LCRAs as a competitive matter related to the city public power utility. Section 551.086. B, consider and discuss the appointment evaluation and our duties of a public officer employee, specifically the city manager, Section 551.074. And consider and discuss the appointment to fill the vacancy of the historical review board, Section 551.074. I'll entertain a motion to go from regular to executive.
So moved.
Have a motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Bobby. Any further discussion? There is none. Most, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those in favor? There is none. Motion carries five zero. Five-minute recess, and folks, thanks for coming.
Okay, we're gonna move to item eight A, consider the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero six R. Appointing individuals to fill the vacancy for the membership of the city without planning and zoning the historic. It's it's just the historic review board and the zoning adjustment. You have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I I move that we appoint Amy Slaughter to the historic review board in the city of Fredericksburg.
Second. Have a motion by Tom and a second by Bobby. Any further discussion?
There's a lot of good people that signed up there. We're glad to see so many that did sign up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's very nice that, you know, the purpose is there. But I just wanted to say that.
May I? Mayor, I just also want to clarify that it's for the remainder of the of the term.
Of like that.
Okay.
The expired term of like them.
Here's ever a motion by Tom and a s-
Second by Bobby.
Second by Bobby on that. Any further discussion? There is none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I I oppose. There is none. Motion carries five zero. Okay.
We didn't have anything actually on the gentleman. Oh, okay.
Okay, I was looking. Okay, business on the city council. So A, consider and discuss the city riot first refusal under the Centex agreement with L C R A as a competitive manner related to the city's public sewer, public power activity section, law five one point zero eight six. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Mayor, I move that we, uh, assignment of rights executed between Gentex Power Corporation, nonprofit corporation in the state of Texas, the Lower Colorado River Authority of Conservation and Reclamation District, state of Texas, and the city of Fredericksburg.
I like a second.
The motion by Tom and a second by Kathy. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There is none. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the other item from the executive session, consider discuss evaluation duties of a public officer or employee specifically city manager. Section five five one point zero seven four. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm moved that we adopt the First Amendment to the city manager employment agreement between the city of Fredericksburg and Kent Myers. Second.
Have a motion by Tom and a second by Kathy. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jerry, second that.
Oh, well, I I heard Kathy say.
Oh, okay.
You did?
Yeah. Well, I already put it in the record.
That's fine, Kathy.
Ladies first. Ladies first. I didn't hear you, Jerry. I thought.
Sorry.
Okay.
I relaxed too much.
Oppose? None. Motion carries five zero. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the city of Fredericksburg. I'm delegating the job of city manager to Clinton Bailey.
Effective?
Effective, what was it? May one, May one?
May first two thousand twenty-two.
Two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion by Tom and a second by Bobby. Any further discussion? There is none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? There is none. Motion carries five oh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Bailey. Condolences, Mr. Bailey.
For further ado.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion by Bobby.
Oh, Kathy seconded it.
To adjourn. Any further discussion? There is none. I got it. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? There is none. Motion carries five zero. Thank you everyone for attending. The in-person or Zoom, no, not Zoom, live streaming. Thank you.